Commissioner Schlegel.
Present.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here. Commissioners, Commissioner Frazier is absent this evening. He's at an appointment in Chicago. Could I please have a motion to excuse him? Commissioner Schlegel?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Frazier for an appointment at a area.
And a second. Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All Commissioners in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion passes six zero. Up next, we have an agenda, and I believe we may have an emotion to modify it slightly. Commissioner Stonehouse, you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Your Honor, I move that the Commission meet in closed session under MCL 15 dot two six eight Bowleg D to consider the purchase of real property owned by the Customs House.
Thank you. And so that will be, at which point again, I'm sorry, Commissioner Frazier? Were you motioning that we add that to on the agenda?
You may edit where you desire.
Wherever we desire.
Usually, the end of the meeting would be appropriate time.
After comments from the city manager, or would it have to be into new business?
I think we could certainly do that under item ten.
Under item ten, okay. Item ten, closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Hill?
I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. All right, announcements, I've got just a couple. We have a few projects in progress. I'm not sure if anyone has had a chance to drive the open section of Lake Shore Boulevard, but it's really quite beautiful, and I encourage everyone to check that out. It's amazing how much more of the lake and kind of the surrounding scenery you can see up there, and you can tell that it's going to be more protected from incoming weather in the future, so. Nice job to city staff for working through that and with the contractor on that project. Couple other projects still in progress. We've got that Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive, and Union Street project, the simp sanitary sewer laterals replacement, Atson Lower Harbor parking lot resurfacing, the annual side rock replacement and repair, and the sanitary sewer and storm cleaning and televising. Up next, we have one appointment and one reappointment, items one and two. They are separate motions that would be required. Commissioners, do we have a motion for the appointment? Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that we appoint Claire Ellis to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee under the terms specified.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a second. Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
It's terrific to see another young person getting involved, and really glad that we'll have a full complement, I believe, now on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee.
Excellent. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Ms. Ellis for her interest. I think her course of studies at Northern and her interest in serving on the arts and culture is a great fit for us, and we're fortunate to have her interested.
Great. Any other discussion by the Commission? Hearing none. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Brings us to the reappointment, item number two. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to reappoint Linda Rowe to the Election Board for a term expiring zero four dot one one dot two four.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion on that?
No, I have no further discussion, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Schlegel?
I just want to say thank you to Linda for re-upping for another term. It's great to see people, especially when they get into serving as long as they do in that six-year capacity. It's really exciting. Thank you.
An important role, too. All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Brings us to public comment. May not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Also, please note Commissioners can't immediately respond. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Not presently.
Nope.
Okay. Do we have any written comments that were sent in? All right. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Next up, we have a presentation, item number three. We've got a certificate of appreciation for City Clerk Chris Hazaras. Chris is retiring after 27 years with the city of Marquette, and we certainly appreciate her service. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to join us this evening, but we wanted to wish her congratulations on her retirement and good luck to her in the future. Commissioners, any other comments for City Clerk Hazaras? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that, you know, when I was running for city commission last year, as well as some other interactions I've had in the past when trying to, you know, register young people to vote in the community and working on some other campaigns and local efforts, Chris has always been a pleasure to work with. I've known her for many years, because, of course, my mom worked for the city for over 30 years, right around, you know, the same period of time, and so I just wish her all the best in the future, and really, I really wanted to reiterate that thanks for her 27 years of service to the city.
Great, thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
Well, just piggyback on that, of course. Thank you, Chris, for many, so many years of dedicated service to our community, and I think it's time to relax and enjoy retirement. So God bless and take care.
Perfect. Well, thanks, Chris. All right, moving on to item number four. We have a presentation by the Local Development Finance Authority by Chair Leslie Hartman. And I think this is going to be virtually zoomed in, so we might have a minute here just to get set up and get all connected.
Yeah, this is, we've done this, but this is the first go at it live, so.
Take your time. I know technology can be a little bit tricky, and we appreciate all the changes that city staff has helped us navigate during the COVID-19 situation. And for those of you who don't know who are calling in, we've tried now, moving forward, to limit folks in chambers to 10 people or less when possible, so presentations, we're having Zoom in as long as it's feasible. So here we go, we're going to try it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so that's.
Here tonight, we have Ray Johnson and Joel Thiel. Ray, this is his last, one of his last city commission meeting. He is retiring at the end of this month. And we're excited to introduce the new CEO of the Smart Zone. Joel Thiel, and he, I think, is close to being live here, if not already. And they have a presentation that will be sharing too, but we want to give our congratulations and thank you to Ray for all that he's done. The LDFA board and the Smart Zone board are both very thrilled with the work that was done, and he's just done an excellent job for our community, and we're very appreciative of all that Ray has done. And I'm also very excited to be having Joel join the team. He started at the end of July. And there's Joe.
There he is. You guys.
So we're excited for what is ahead for the Smart Zone and all that we've accomplished to date. So I guess with no further ado, I'll turn it over. I know we're limited on our time here tonight, so if we want to pull up the presentation.
Yeah, someone.
Great, and thank you all for joining us. And I know the three of you who are on the Zoom, if you're not talking, if you could go ahead and mute yourself, because I think that's where we're getting the echo. Thank you all.
I have a PowerPoint I'd like to share, if someone can allow me to share it.
We're working on it. Thanks, Ray. I think I, we're working on it. I see someone working on it anyway.
All right.
Are you able to click Share Screen, or do you not have that option, Ray?
I do.
Okay.
I can share a screen, and I'm going to go right to the presentation. I'm going to share it. I'm going to bring it up.
Looks like it's working perfect.
Looks like it's working?
Yep. We see your presentation. Excellent.
Excellent. So I'll go ahead. Thank you, Leslie, for that, for those comments. I appreciate your leadership at the LDFA, and certainly together, we've done a lot of things. You had mentioned, yes, I'm going to retire. It's been five years, actually. For those of you in the beginning, it doesn't seem like five years, but when I first joined on, I told the board that, look, this is a complete startup from scratch, and I'm committed to do it for three years, get us rolling, and here we are, five years later. I think one of the big, important pieces of what we did and what we accomplished was really the strategic partnership with the university, Northern Michigan University, and in particular, the Invented NMU program, and really creating that one-stop shop for all inventors and entrepreneurs in our community. Whatever their idea might be, we have a place where they can go and help bring ideas and businesses forward. And if you think about that, it's really created an idea incubator that is utilizing students, led by a professional staff, myself included at the time, now Joe taking over the reins of the program, and really driven by a group of really talented students. So not only are we helping entrepreneurs, we're also creating workforce education and real-world experiences for these students, and they go out and are really able to get jobs in areas that are of great interest to them. Does it work? People ask me, does it work? Well, since five years, there've been 670 ideas through the door. That's one new idea every three days, in a community of 21,000-plus, if you count the county and some of the other parts of the region. So I think that's pretty, pretty good. Now, I've always said that not all the ideas are good ideas, and part of our job is to help that, the good ones, and bring those forward. Here's an interesting thing. Since COVID-19 sort of hit in, let's say, March 10th, there's been 45 new ideas submitted. I think that's pretty remarkable, and I think what it says is people, even though they may be at stay-at-home or curtailed in their business areas, are still thinking of ways to be entrepreneurial and bringing ideas forward. And one of the other things that we did was we offered, in partnership with the university, some free services for existing companies during COVID. And what we found is that they had no online presence. So 20 businesses reached out to us. We completed work for eight of those. We're actively working with three, a couple of those, Phil's 550, helping them in the marketing. There's Berg's Garlic Farm. What they found is they really needed marketing and online presence and technology support, and the team at the Smart Zone and at Invented NMU was able to really help these folks. And so right now, there are 32 active clients and projects being worked by the team, and we've been 100% remote since March 10th. We use the Zoom video conferencing. We have tools like Asana and Slack that we use to project manage. We have, we have weekly meetings as a team and go through the projects, and so we haven't really missed a beat. So if you think about it, whether it's high-tech, low-tech, or no-tech, we believe all ideas are worth exploring, and we're going to hand that mantle on to Joe. And I'll mention one, two other key points that Joe will eventually spend a whole lot of time on during his tenure. And that is really around creating economic development and what we're calling the new digital tech economy. And that includes cybersecurity and an EDA grant that we submitted June 14th, which really is allowing us, if we win it, $600,000 worth of funding from the federal government to expand and work on strategies and capabilities and incubation and support to entrepreneurs in the digital marketplace, with the idea of really creating downtown in partnership with the Verity Group and others, NMU, the UP Cyber Institute, and Invest UP, really an innovation hub. If you can envision, if this comes to fruition, what we see is this downtown location, which is really the hub of innovation and technology around the digital economies. And so this is what we leave in place as a way to have innovation, entrepreneurship, regional connectivity, commercialization of research, and workforce preparation for the future. And so, you know, we're looking for that grant. We hope to win it. We'll know in August if we do, and that'll really put rocket fuel on our efforts as we go forward. So let me stop there, and very quickly, when I told the board in the end of the year, December last, that I was going to retire, we quickly formed a search committee. We retained staying decision systems. We put out a nationwide search. There were over 130 inquiries about the job. Over 40 candidates, actually from all over the U.S., and a couple in Europe and one in Japan, applied for the job. We whittled that down to 16 qualified candidates. The search committee reviewed all those results. We did detailed testing online. We had five finalists on a shortlist. We made each finalist do a Zoom video interview and a 90-day plan. And ultimately, it all came down to a selection that Joe Thiel was really heads above all the other candidates. And we were fortunate enough to have him accept our offer. As Leslie stated, he started July 27th. Press announcement and follow-on onboarding and transition period is happening this week, and you'll be hearing a lot more from Joe. I'm pretty psyched about, about his, of his experience, his energy, his creativity, and I think he's really the, the new CEO to take the Smart Zone and Invented NMU and our community forward. He's an NMU graduate. He's got a great number of years of experience in the entrepreneurial world, starting tech companies, creating jobs. He's a self-described super nerd for technology and modern science. He's relocating from Traverse City to Marquette, and he'll be on-hand and connected. And I hope, I hope there'll be an opportunity, once we get through the COVID situation, where the Commission members can, can meet Joe in a more detailed and hands-on way. So with that, I don't know if there's time for Joe just to make a quick statement?
Absolutely. Go ahead. And I think, Ray, if you could mute while he does that, I think it'll just help the audio.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me try and do that. Can everybody hear? I'm going to try and mute. Hold on, hold on.
We got it. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Perfect. Hey, everyone. Look, I really want to thank everyone. I'm very, very, very excited for the opportunities that Ray has set forth. I mean, the networks that he's built and the community awareness that he's built has really put a very fine platform in place for me. I've already been integrated with everything this last week. It's kind of like, kind of like a fire hose, but all the students have been engaged, community members have been engaged, and now I think we can really, with all the work that Ray's done, really put this thing into high gear, and that's our goal. There's a bunch of amazing projects in the mix right now. We've got people coming, you know, online and in the community, reaching out for additional services. We've got a whole bunch of networks with people, so the next five years is going to be extremely exciting, and I've got some great plans. So I look forward to, when the COVID stuff is over, for everyone to meet with me and share my plan and share kind of my grander vision of what I, what I hope to see in the next five to 10 years. And I'm super excited to be here. So thank you all very much for having us on tonight. And, and like, again, I really look forward to everything here in the near future and then long term.
Excellent. Very nice to meet you, Joe. We're thrilled to have you onboard. We're sad to see you go, Ray, but it sounds like you found a good person to kind of step in and carry the mission forward. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments on this presentation? And just a note that this might be a little tricky, because I'm thinking, I'm asking, is the audio in the microphone that our presenters can hear or in the phone?
So I will cut back to the video. They should be able to still hear you, though.
Thank you. Okay, so duck in your microphones. I just wasn't sure how that was going to work. That hadn't occurred to me till we started doing it. All right, Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Davis?
I just want to thank you, Ray, for the years you've been with the LDFA, and I think you've taken it from its birth through its elementary years and into its adolescence and ready to hand it off. I'm particularly pleased with the partnership with Northern and the work that you've been able to do with our, our small businesses during the COVID and getting them with an online presence. Good luck with the ADA funding. I think it'd be a great next step for Marquette's future. And then, Joe, of course, welcome. It's really nice to have an NMU graduate and someone familiar with the area come out ahead as the best candidate in such a rigorous process for interviews. So thank you and welcome.
Great. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you so much, Joe, for stepping forward and Ray for your service. I know, you know, when I visited you over at Invented NMU last year, it was one of the most interesting meetings I've ever had locally here in Marquette. Certainly very inspiring to see the partnership with NMU and all the students and young people involved. It really, as a young person in the community, really gives me hope to see an initiative like this in the community, and I'm really excited to see what direction Joe is going to take the organization as well. So thank you both for your service to the community.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Ray, on your retirement. Thank you for all you've done, and, and really, congratulations on getting it to where, where we are today. Leslie, as chair, I'm sure, has been a great sidekick to have, work with you, I'm sure, and now with Joe coming back to the community, this is really, obviously, you know, not any big surprise to see that this is where things are heading, and we need to be much more prepared for our remote working and the remote workplaces and things along those lines. The idea incubator has always been something, and I'm going to warn you right now, I've got two or three things I'm going to stop at and talk to, talk to the crew about pretty soon, but I got to get a couple more details worked up. But it's just something that I find, and I'm really glad that you brought up the point about the number of ideas that have come from this COVID break, because the silver lining that's coming from all of this junk that we've had to endure with COVID, to me, is, especially in, you know, the industry that I'm in, it has, it has allowed people to step back, take a, take a couple seconds and get rid of a lot of extra stuff and focus a little bit more, more intently on some of their passions. And these are the types of ideas that can be game changers for communities, for people's lives, and for, for certain industries. So I'm really excited to hear that that is a trend that I've noticed in where I'm from, but also in what you're, you're focusing on with this, with the LDFA. So that's, that is not something that surprises me, and I'm really glad that you're bringing that statistic to us tonight. But thank you very much, everybody. This is going to go nowhere but, you know, up and continue to grow. So we're just really, really lucky to have this, this group working for us and our community. So thank you again.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you.
I was here when, when Ray came onboard, and certainly have had the pleasure of his friendship now for five years. And what has happened has been absolutely remarkable. His ability to start from zero and build up what we have now and be able to fold the Smart Zone and Invented NMU together into one very powerful machine that really works very well for the future. As we all know, the classic indundrum of the Upper Peninsula, the classic indundrum that Marquette always faces is we export our best product. We export our kids, right along with rocks and wood. And now we have an opportunity to keep them around, to keep them in the area, working in good tech jobs with a real future to it, and to substantially change the way the economy in the Upper Peninsula works, is looks, is considered, and what the future of it can be. And it's folks now that are falling in behind what Ray was able to do, folks like Joe, that can certainly take that all to the next level. And it is a real pleasure to see the transition occur, not that we're losing Ray, but that we have the opportunity now to just to continue it and continue to grow that. So thank you both. Thank you, Joe, for coming onboard, and Ray, for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Very, very kind of you. Thank you.
Well, thank all three of you. I appreciate you joining us, and it seems like the organization is going to keep moving forward in a positive way, and we certainly appreciate all you're doing for the city of Marquette and the folks who live and work here. I think that's all for now, and we look forward to updates in the future. And Joe, I'm sure we'll get a chance to meet you face-to-face, even if we have to be outside and 10 feet apart. We can probably make that happen, so we want to, we want to meet you soon.
Yeah, see you soon. Thank you all so much.
Okay, yep, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would make the motion to accept the consent agenda as listed.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Commissioner Banzel?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to new business, item number six, appointment of a new city clerk. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk Chris Hazaras has announced her retirement, effective August 31st, 2020. In accordance with the city charter and in recognition of his qualifications and experience, the city manager has appointed Kyle Whitney as the next Marquette City Clerk, effective September 1, 2020. Mr. Whitney has worked for the city for nearly seven years. The last five is deputy clerk. In addition to his certification as a state of Michigan accredited election official, he is certified as both a municipal clerk and a Michigan municipal clerk. Since joining the clerk's office in early 2015, he has worked alongside Clerk Hazaras to oversee the staffing and organization of more than a dozen elections. In his role as deputy clerk, Mr. Whitney spent time last year contributing to a statewide work group aimed at creating absentee balloting best practices for Michigan election coordinators. Mr. Whitney has additionally worked alongside the city clerk to amend and update the Marquette City Code as well as to handle other routine business of the clerk's office. Fiscal effect, the salary for the city clerk is included in the current budget. Recommendation, confirm the city manager's appointment of Kyle Whitney as city clerk. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we confirm the city manager's appointment of Kyle Whitney as city clerk.
Do we have a second? Mayor Protem Hill?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Just that I'm very happy to be making this motion, and Kyle, it's probably kind of weird to be reading that at the same time, I appreciate your qualifications and the good work that you have been doing previous to this, and I look forward to having you as a city clerk.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Same, and just thanks again to Chris for her years of service, and we look forward to working with you, Kyle, as we come into this very important election year and all the other important things that clerk offices does. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Kyle, for stepping forward in this new role. You know, it's, it's always been a real pleasure working with you. You know, whenever anybody, I hear this from many people, whenever anybody walks into the office, the city clerk's office, you're always a source of positivity and professionalism, very helpful, and really good at what you do. So I'm really looking forward to the direction that you take the city clerk's office in the coming years, and also, you know, sometimes in public service, you have to really embody the office that you hold, and I think that you did a really good job of that just now, reading that, that statement about yourself there in the, in the third person, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only to say welcome aboard, though you have been here forever. But very seriously, the clerk's office has always been a great strength in the city hall, and Kyle will be able to carry through that tradition. He's already done so and will certainly continue to do so. That said, thanks to Chris for all she's done and for, you know, really the good work that she's given us all. But welcome aboard.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, I'll just keep echoing. Kyle, looking forward to working with you. I have to compliment you and the rest of the, the office. You know, with all of the changes that have come from the mail-in ballots, from the being able to register the day of, you guys have had a lot of challenges, new challenges, and very involved. I can't remember the previous, not this past election, but the previous election. How many people had walked in that day to register? Was it like 150?
It was well over 120.
Okay, so imagine all of everything else going on, and then you've got to deal with 120-plus people walking in as if they're just turned 18 and ready to register to vote for the first time, or maybe they were moving into the area, whatever it might be. But to handle that, the way that you guys have, is really a compliment. Chris has done a great job, and I think that this is yet another transition that we will see. see be seamless. And I think that that's just, again, a compliment to the mentoring, the bringing up of the next generation of city employee or coworkers, whatever you want to say to this point, but it's just, it's exciting. So, congratulations, Kyle, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's already all been said, Kyle. We're excited to have you onboard. We'll certainly miss Chris, but I think that she's left us with an excellent replacement. And I just have to say, every time I've ever brought you a problem or something new and unique to work on, you always respond with a positive attitude and very excited that we're going to be working with you moving forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
All right. So, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to new business, item number seven, rates for light and power for the Board of Light and Power. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Marquette Board of Light and Power met on August 4, 2020, and adopted a 3.7% decrease in total cost recovery, beginning on October 1, 2020. A summary of the approved rates and associated rate design is attached. According to the city charter, section 11-7(c), the Board of Light and Power shall have power and authority to fix all rates for light and power, subject to confirmation by the city commission, which rates shall become effective 30 days after such confirmation. Fiscal effect, as reflected in the rate schedule. Recommendation, confirm the Board of Light and Power's rate design, adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their August 4, 2020 meeting, with a 3.7% decrease in total cost recovery, beginning on October 1, 2020. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I make motion to, excuse me, I'll make the motion to confirm the Board of Light and Power's rate design, adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their August 4, 2020 meeting, with a 3.7% decrease in total cost revenue, beginning on October 1 of 2020.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you. I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Schlegel, anything to say about that decrease?
Yeah. Well, when I got my budget form in the mail, this is mayor, I just about fell over. I thought, wait a minute, we're getting something back here? Very, very excited. I also was wondering if my Christmas light LED switch-over and house LED switch-over is really paying off. And I'm going to take some of the credit on that. I don't know if that's really the case right now, but I'm going to take some credit there. I'm looking forward to, I'd like maybe a little bit further explanation, if I can, from our members of the Board of Light and Power, if they'd like to shed a little light on the reason that they're able to do this for our community. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and do that now and then I'll come back to the commission to see if there are any other comments. And I believe we have Tom Carpenter on the line with the Board of Light and Power. Tom, are you still on the phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Just give me a second here. Can I make the phone over so the folks can hear you? All right. Would you mind to just kind of explain a little bit how we got here?
Sure. So, really going back a few years to the decision to shut the Shatter's steam plant off, we found ways to operate in a much more efficient manner. With the new power plant, we're able to dispatch our power supply in ways that we never had before and take advantage of low natural gas prices and also low market prices out in the open market for wholesale power and pass those savings back on to the customers. And what's really not reflected entirely in this letter I wrote to you guys was the fact that we've been passing those savings back for three years. You know, over the last three years, we've passed back $4 million in savings and we're formalizing that with an actual rate adjustment, so you'll be seeing those going forward too.
Excellent. Commissioners, any other questions for Tom Carpenter here? Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Tom. I am very curious about the monthly charge. I don't, I, it has actually gone up and that is not the most equitable way to make sure that people's, the problem with having, raising the fixed charge and reducing the rates is that the folks who are on fixed incomes, the folks who are, tend to be in more low income, tend to use less energy. And so, they're actually paying more and they, it's not entirely clear to me that their bills will in fact be going down. I mean, it depends, of course, on how much energy they use, but could you please explain why the monthly charge went up, but the rates went down? That doesn't seem entirely equitable.
So, a couple of quick things here. The particular meters that you would be most concerned about are the low-power users, you know, maybe a small house or a small apartment, and that would be our U1, R1 rate class. And if you look at those monthly charges, the R1 didn't change at all and the U1 went up 50 cents. So, it's a pretty insignificant change to the monthly charge on a U1 rate. But to further answer your question, the reason you make monthly charges, what they are, is to provide an actual equitable cost of service for the energy that we're providing and the services that we're providing. You know, about 70 or 80% of our business is fixed cost, so we need to be able to recover an appropriate amount of that in fixed fees. So, if there's a customer out there that even uses 1 kilowatt hour of electricity, there's still a cost to that. So, we have to make sure that that fixed fee cost is appropriate. And even where it's at now, it doesn't completely recover all of our fixed costs. It just kind of inches more towards that direction.
Thank you. I mean, true, it isn't that much of a change, but I think from everything that I'm reading about how with the demand continuing to go down, we have to be very careful about how we set these rates because there are, we're getting more and more tools to better fine-grain how we allocate costs over time, over a 24-hour period. And so, there could be in the future ways to allocate it, the costs, in ways that may mean that the folks who are on fixed incomes and lower income might not have to carry so much of the load. And I look forward to that dialogue. And that leads me to my next question, which is, so we've had this rate change. Now, when do you expect to have, do you, did you also have a conversation about when rates would change again?
So, by the current projections and our current rate study, you know, we looked out 10 years for revenue projections and we do these rate studies on a three- to five-year basis, or if we need to, because of system changes or operational changes. But currently, we are not projected to touch the rates again until 2024. And then by that time, we would reevaluate and see what kind of a movement we may need to make. So, the projections say, unless we have some kind of a change, that we're going to be 0-0-0-0 until 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, thank you, Tom, for that background information. I think that Mayor Protem Hill raises some valid points about equity. I think that mostly, you know, that's useful, you know, for future consideration if we're looking at, you know, larger rate increases like, you know, have happened in the past few years. But I'm really excited about this. I think it's going to be a great thing for the community. And as you noted, you know, even those lower-power consumers aren't really going to be significantly worse off here anyway. In fact, you know, many of them, or most of them, may come out ahead with the reduced per kilowatt hour fee. So, definitely just want to thank you for the good work that you're doing over there, but I guess just, yeah, making sure that we are centering those issues of equity in the future when we're talking about larger increases or potential decreases.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I only want to commend the VLP board and the full-time leadership for their ability to take the rates and drive them lower. That's a remarkable achievement. This is an error when things go up, as we have to wrestle with water rates, for example, every year. And to have a basic utility rate decrease significantly in 3.7 is a significant number. That's good news and we should certainly celebrate the management skill that they're showing us, the leadership that they're doing, and also the value that it will give to our city. So, thank you very much for what you do. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else? Well, Tom, I appreciate you, your willingness to join us on the call and kind of explain a little. It's kind of unusual to have a decrease and I appreciate your organization's willingness to help make that happen and have the foresight to make some of those changes and be able to pass it along to the city and the rate payers. And yeah, hopefully, no rate increases till 2024 is what I heard. So, thank you. I guess at this point, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you for joining us, Tom.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to new business, item number eight, city manager and city attorney performance evaluation process. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires the city commission to conduct an annual performance review of both the city manager and the city attorney. Past practice has been to appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review the evaluations completed by all commissioners and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. The city attorney is paid on a retainer basis and the amount of his compensation for legal services is approved as part of the annual budget process. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to appoint three commissioners to serve on the committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and make the recommendation regarding any adjustments to the manager's compensation or terms of employment.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Just doing some business as usual.
Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Get my microphone back here. Had it over by the phone for Tom Carpenter. Sorry about that. Okay. Moving on to item number nine, delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. City clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the Michigan Municipal League holds a meeting of its members, which includes the election of trustees, voting on policy issues, and other business. In accordance with Michigan Municipal League's bylaws, each municipality member is asked to appoint one official voting delegate and one official alternate voting delegate to represent the municipality at this annual meeting. The Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting will be held as an online virtual meeting on September 29, 2020. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, authorize the mayor to appoint one city delegate and one alternate to participate in the virtual online 2020 Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we authorize the mayor to appoint one city delegate and one alternate to participate in the virtual online 2020 Michigan Municipal Annual Meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes.
Item number 10, Your Honor.
Oh, did I miss one?
Closed session.
Oh, I didn't have it in my notes here. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10. We did add this item, I'm sorry. This is a closed session, so we're going to make, have some discussions about legal matters related to city business, so the meeting will be turned off to the public momentarily. We'll come back on for public comment when we are done with the closed session. Do we need a motion on the closed session to make it happen?
I move that we move to, that the commission meet in a closed session to discuss legal issue on real property.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Hill. Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Mayor, that actually, that needs to be a roll call vote.
Oh, it needs to be a roll call vote? Okay, roll call vote, please, city clerk. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now in closed session at 6:46 PM. We'll come back online when the closed session is completed. How do we know if we're not being broadcast?
So, we should.
Lights? Lights on? Yeah, with lights. And...
Yeah, with the lights.
Are we live? Okay, we're back in our public meeting at 7:18 PM now. So, brings us to our second public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
I don't. We had someone earlier, and I think it was probably a board member from the BLP. They are now gone.
Okay, so we don't have anyone, and we have no written public comments either?
No.
All right. Brings us to comments from the commission. Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we had a really productive meeting tonight. I just want to remind city residents who might be watching that the city of Marquette is entering our annual budget process this month. Every August, we hold several budget work sessions before voting on the final budget for the coming fiscal year. Our first budget session is going to be this Wednesday at 5:15, I believe. And then we're going to have several more throughout the month, so keep an eye out for that. Of course, due to economic impacts from COVID-19 this month, we're going to have some very difficult challenges to work through, I'm sure. You know, losing potentially up to a million dollars in revenue on top of approximately 1.5 million that we've lost due to the Prescott Power Plant closure. This afternoon, I actually attended a webinar hosted by the Michigan Municipal League and the National League of Cities. And according to them, the latest estimates are that the state of Michigan is looking at at least a $3 billion decline in revenue, and that this decline may persist for several years. Most likely targets for state-level budget cuts are going to be roads and local revenue sharing. So, the legislatures, the state legislature is currently out of session, giving members time to campaign for reelection back in their districts. The federal level Congress and the president are refusing to support federal aid to local governments on the grounds that we are fiscally irresponsible, which is pretty rich coming from a government that's currently running a trillion-dollar deficit. But hopefully, the Congress and the state legislature will stop dragging their heels, will get some relief for local governments in the country, which may make our jobs a little bit easier moving forward. We certainly, I don't think we have time for the kind of dysfunction we've been seeing in Lansing and Washington recently. So, I just wanted to note that because I think it's very relevant right now, given the upcoming budget discussions. Also, I wanted to thank the city clerk's office and our election volunteers, our Parks and Rec staff, other city staff who supported our August 4th primary election. We had a very successful primary election, and really a historic one, that only 8% of the registered voters cast votes at the polls, but thanks to the efforts of city staff and state-level policymakers, we were able to have 32% of the registered voters in the city participate, which is actually reasonably high turnout for an August primary, when there wasn't a whole lot on the ballot. So, that's really encouraging to see, and hopefully that will mean that we'll have high turnout in the November election, even if, in the likely event that COVID-19 is still a significant issue at that time. So, certainly a successful experiment and a good thing for democracy. And then finally, I just wanted to thank Marquette Police Department, Park Patrol, stepping up enforcement of local ordinances at Prescott Isle and our public beaches. I know, you know, I've been contacted by many local residents about the serious traffic, parking, litter issues we've had at the island and on the lakeshore lately. And I'm sure with students coming back, those challenges will only increase in the coming weeks. But I do think that we're doing a very good job in stepping up enforcement of those ordinances. And I do want all city residents to know that City is taking this seriously. We're doing our best to enforce existing ordinances and are considering how we can do better in the future, but I just want to thank city staff for their efforts in that regard as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got not a lot to say tonight, hard to believe, but one of the things I do want to kind of touch base on is something that Commissioner Bonzal just brought up. One of the biggest issues that I run across with talking with people out in the, just public, is dogs. And, you know, I'm a big dog lover, and I hope that someday we can organize a dog park that's going to be beneficial for our entire community. But the parks and dogs right now, especially being Prescott Isle, I've had a number of people in the last, you know, ever since summer started here, more than, more than normal, come in and really voice their concern about the number of dogs that they're seeing in our public parks. And, you know, we were all kind of calling for some, you know, some sort of numbers that we can come across to justify that, yes, our Park Patrol and our police and our city employees are watching for, and it has definitely been an issue that's been addressed by those people. I think this past week, there were 16 people mentioned that were either, I think that they were asked to remove their dogs from the park, or there may have been a ticket, I'm not 100% sure on that. But it is being addressed, and please, you know, if you run across anybody, which I happen to have done these past two weeks, that does have a dog out, just be very kind and polite and just say, please, just so you know, you will get a ticket if they come through and they see you with your dogs outside of the vehicles. And, you know, let them know in a nice manner, and hopefully they'll respond appropriately, and if not, then just let them go. But, you know, you're doing your part to police as much as we can, and I'll thank you in advance for doing that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Well, the few things I was going to comment on have been very eloquently addressed by the two previous commissioners, so I will just say no further comment.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. It's, as the previous commissioners mentioned, it's really good to see the enforcement actions that are ongoing at Prescott Isle and along Lake Shore Boulevard, too. It's unfortunate we need them, but again, we have the ordinances, and they certainly should be enforced. On, really some bad news, though, and that's really on vandalism. Just last night, we had the U.S. flag stolen from the war memorial for the daughter and dace in Matson Park. And it takes a certain kind of miscreant, a certain kind of lowlife, to steal a U.S. ensign from a war memorial. And that just redefines lowness. Vandalism continues at the lighthouse that occurred about a week ago again. If anybody out there understands or knows who's involved in this type of thing, I would ask you to please call the police so they can take appropriate action. For those of us that love our city, that love Marquette, this type of behavior is simply unacceptable in any level, and action needs to be taken to preclude it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you. I wanted to bring up two things. It's part of the consent agenda tonight. We approved a public hearing on the smoking ordinance in our parks, and I'm going to be sharing that online, the draft language. I think it's important that we have a conversation about this. I think it's a, it's a good, it's one of those things where it's a, it's, we know that smoking is not good for us. We know that some people choose to engage in this behavior. It is legal. And so, we're looking at limiting, further limiting locations where people can smoke. And I think it's important to let everyone be able to weigh in on this. And I think it promotes in the long run this question of enforcement. I think it can help. The better we communicate it in advance. So, we will be discussing it, I believe, at the August 31st meeting. Is that correct? Yeah. That, and it's written pretty broadly right now. It's, it's proposing, I had questions, in fact, that potentially we could get answered either now or later, but it looked like it meant that we couldn't smoke, one couldn't smoke in the, like in the parking lot of the library. You couldn't, it wasn't also clear to me whether you could even smoke in your own vehicle. And I just wanted sort of clarification on what the law is saying. I think in principle, we want to be, promote public health, and particularly in this time where we're dealing with a virus that attacks the lungs and the cardiovascular system, it's really important that we be careful and cognizant of that. But I also want to make sure we're coming forward with something that the community understands may change your, what behavior is allowed in certain public locations. So, again, I'm not, not against it, but just want to make sure that folks are aware. And then also with the coronavirus, I went and looked at the numbers today. The state has an incredible website, michigan.gov/coronavirus, that you can zoom in, you can look at the whole state, but you can zoom in by our region. We're Region 8 in the Upper Peninsula. And then you can zoom in on Marquette County. And what I thought was interesting was in May, Marquette County had six cases. In June, we had 18 cases. And in July, we had 59 cases. So, now, of course, some of that is because we also improved testing, but the numbers were clearly going up, and that's not what you want. I don't care how many tests you do, we want the number to go down. So far in August, so in the 10 days of August, we have 15 cases, which is actually a slight, if it stays on that trend, would be a decrease from July. So, hopefully, we will be able to keep that number down. But of course, we're going through a transition with schools starting at both K-12 and at NMU. And I want the public to know that we are very concerned and are watching this very closely. I've been in conversations with county officials, other state, other local officials, state officials, and I'm hearing from the public how much concern folks have about the impact of tourism, the impact of, you know, of this virus on our community continues to be a significant problem. And we're, we're all wearing our masks. I don't, we have plexiglass now between us, which I have to say does bring a real level of comfort to me to be here with folks. And I'm wishing everyone well as we go into this next phase, and how we can continue to work and be stronger together on dealing with this virus.
Thank you. I've got a few things tonight, so a lot has been said already, so I won't be repetitive. One, the city manager and city attorney evaluation process prior to approval, if it was approved, I approached Commissioner Stonehouse and Commissioner Schlegel to see if they would join me in serving on that committee, that subcommittee, and they both agreed graciously. Thank you both. And it was the three of us that served in this committee last year as well. So, looking forward to being at the evaluations for some of our most important staff. The Michigan Municipal League delegate, I will be filling that role, and I've asked Mayor Protem Hill to serve as my backup if needed. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for your willingness to fill in if needed. And And, uh, this past Saturday, I had the honor of speaking at a Habitat for Humanity Build event. They're building a home in Gwin and, um, I will have the details, the folks are interested in helping them out. They've had difficulty getting volunteers because of COVID, um, but it's very safe, everyone's wearing masks and distancing and, um, it was, it was really a good event to see, they're trying to get this house built for a family before Thanksgiving. And then finally, I know Commissioner Bonzal touched on the budget meetings already, but I just wanted to state they begin on Wednesday. Uh, the meeting dates are on Wednesday, August 12th, Monday, August 17th, Wednesday, August 19th, and Monday, August 24th. All meetings are at 5:15 PM and you will be able to watch them on YouTube. I'm not sure about 191. And 191 or not? At least YouTube. We're figuring out those, yeah, okay. See, again, you, you can't come in person, but you're welcome to watch and submit comments ahead of time or call in with comments. This is really our, one time a year, we get to review everything the city is doing, where we're spending our money, and it's gonna be, um, even more difficult and interesting this year with kind of not knowing what COVID's going to do to our budget, so we're gonna do, take our best shot at the budget and probably have to reevaluate, um, when we figure out what the state is gonna do with their budget after October 1. Well, their budget is due September 30th at midnight, but anyway, um, we have to figure out our plan before we see theirs. So, I don't think I have anything else. City manager, any comments this evening?
Yes, thank you. Um, I also want to thank and recognize the police department for their efforts, uh, regarding the beaches and the parks this summer. Uh, for some reason, in spite of COVID-19, we are as busy as ever. Uh, I just wanted to note that, uh, particularly that last week, they wrote 225 parking citations on Peter White Drive alone, which is the island. Which can either mean they're good, there's a lot of people that are bad, there's a lot of people parking the wrong way there, so it's a little of both, but I, I wanted to commend them and thank them for that. We also have a developing parking issue, uh, at the new construction where the triangle used to be, where Pine Street comes out. People have decided to drive across our new landscaping and our new grass and park on the beach there and, uh, we've signed it and we're going to start issuing there as well, issuing citations, so you may hear some feedback on that as well, but, um, it's all perfectly landscaped and planted and yet they drive on it. I want to, uh, also bring you up to speed that, uh, recent communication with the, uh, DNRs that they are moving forward on their shoreline stabilization along the bike path on 41 South. If you recall, we have a section that's south of, uh, the carp that was eroding, it's in the, uh, MDOT right away, but was affecting the bike path to the point where we had to detour bikes off of it and walkers off of it onto the street for a short distance. And the DNR, who is responsible for these improvements, has secured the financing and they hope to, uh, be starting within a month or so, uh, with that stabilization project. So if you get any calls about that, it's, it's en route, uh, or being done. Uh, lastly, I wanted to just bring you up to speed, the, uh, we've been working at Shiras Park, we've been working with a, a local, uh, person, Diane Cordage, for the placement of an historical marker with the life of George Shiras III at Shiras Park. This was supposed to have been done last spring, but because of COVID, it was delayed. The city put in the foundation, it's near the bike path towards the southern end of the park, uh, and the, uh, Shiras Institute locally will be financing and installing the, uh, the historical sign. Uh, hopefully we'll have that done in the next, uh, few weeks or months as well, so you'll see that as an improvement to that park. And thank you all for the, uh, uh, the work you've done tonight at the meeting and helping us move forward. Thank you.
We are adjourned at 7:36 PM.